Good evening. We are returning back from closed session with no reportable action. Roll call?
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
Councilmember Parlat?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Mayor Maitland?
Here.
Static.
Where does that come from? Pledge of Allegiance. Suzanne, do you want to lead us tonight?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to our meeting tonight. Looks like people didn't bring friends, I keep asking. If you're here to speak on something on the agenda, please wait for that item. We have citizen input forms up there, which we have one. Okay, we'll move to acceptance of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, move to accept the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the consent agenda, waive the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration, approve the minutes of the city council's special meeting of June 5th, 2017, and the regular city council meeting of June 6th, 2017, approve the warrant register of June 12th, approve application number 2017-023 with staff recommendations for the annual Lake County Fair Parade to take place on Main Street August 31st, approve the designated temporary disabled parking on C and D Streets between South Forbes Street and the respective fairgrounds entrance gates from 4:00 PM August 31st to midnight on Sunday, September 3rd, and approve the lease for fair parking at 902 Bevins Court with the 49th District Agricultural Association and authorize the city manager to execute the lease. We're going to cancel the regular city council meeting of August 1st and approve the participation of the City of Lakeport in the National Night Out event with street closures, and authorize the acceptance of Highway 29 Force Main Project and to record a notice of completion with the County of Lake. Does anyone want to pull anything for discussion? Anyone from the public? Okay, take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second, then.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input. We do have one from Suzanne. Come on up.
I'm just so proud of this, I had to bring it and show you. We showed you the little card that we had done for the walking path. Well, what had happened, I think I told you the last time, but we had planned to do this little walking path through the downtown, through the park, and then we went into our first meeting this year and went, oops, the little medallions that we had planned to set in the sidewalk there in the park couldn't be set because the sidewalk's not available. So, we had heard, oh, we're not going to be able to do it, and thought, oh no, we've got to be able to save it. Somehow, luckily, Kevin had come to one of our meetings, and he had a picture on his phone of a sign that he had seen when he was in Pasadena, of some maps that they had done, that they had on their, some light posts and different posts around town. So, we went, ooh, we could save our project and make it go ahead and happen if we did just some signs for that area that won't have the medallion set. So, we did these signs and they came out really nice.
Oh, nice.
So, we're really happy with them. They're nice and durable. They are temporary, but they're supposed to be able to last for two and a half to three years, so that ought to get us through that. We only had a dozen of these made so that they will go on that area in the park. And we did have money in the budget, and I wasn't sure if the council understood this, but this project has been paid for through a grant that we got from, what is it called here?
Sutter.
The Community Transformation Grant.
Yes.
Okay, from Sutter Hospital. And the reason that they came to us with this grant was they said, we need something that will promote, we need to give this money to somebody who will do a project that will promote good health and exercise in your city. And we went, bingo, we have one already that we've been trying to get a grant for, so here it is. The part that's really funny is, since we've started working on this, everything I pick up says, you need to walk. Everything, everything I read says, every age, everyone I talk to says, my doctor says I need to walk, my therapist says I need to walk. The one that kills me is, I've been going to therapy, I've been riding my bike in therapy, my stationary bike, I can ride for 15 minutes, I burn like 25 calories. I walk around the block, a third of a mile, this first little area here is a quarter of a mile, a third of a mile, 310 calories.
Does that make a difference?
Yes. And so, I went to therapy and I said, gee, you know, is there something wrong with the phone that's telling me this? They're like, no, 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 walking is the best, and everybody can do it, and we're so lucky with this town that we have an area where you can walk in, you're not having to go up and down hills and climb through things. So, anyway, this is, now what we need is, we need our first little sign, we've got a couple of benches, and the sign that the Parks and Rec Department will be putting in, and we're good to go.
Very nice.
So, these will be going up hopefully, I don't think they'll be before 4th of July.
No, but we're going to get right on that.
Okay, it's, we're set to go, so it's really exciting. And I do have to say that in driving down the street, the city looks so pretty, it really, really does.
It really does.
I just came back, I spent the weekend in San Francisco in Marin, guess what?
Aww.
We look really good. The trees look beautiful, the baskets look beautiful, the brick paths, everything, it just really, really looks very, very tasty here.
Yay. All right.
I just want to thank Suzanne and the Parks and Rec Committee and staff, that they've worked really hard, it took a long time to do this project, and I really, really appreciate it, it's turned out really nice.
I think it really is, and I really think that we should think of some way to later on when it's not so hot, get everybody to walk. And the other thing that I had thought, 40 years in retail sales, it never occurred to me, because one of the things that's nice about this is, it brings people walking through town, and in 40 years of retail sales, it never dawned on me, these little mom and pops, you don't jump in your car and go, I think I'm going to go downtown and buy a little dress or something, a little gift. People get in their cars, they go Safeway, they go to, they drive all the way over to Costco, but if you walk by a little shop and you go, what a cute window, what a nice shop, I didn't know, I didn't realize this was there. So, I think that this is probably really, really good for the little stores. And I already have stores of physical therapy, told me today, we need more of these.
Oh, good.
So, that's good.
Maybe we can do like a lemonade stand and a walk.
Okay, would be fun, wouldn't it?
Have a Lakeport lemonade.
Water.
Jeremy creating a Lakeport lemonade.
I know. I still want grog. Okay.
Oh yeah, that's right, I forgot about that conversation.
Okay, so, any questions?
No, thank you so much, I'm glad you stuck with it.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Counsel?
Doug?
That thing ain't working, I don't need that anyway. I would also like to commend Suzanne and Ann Blue in particular, along with the rest of the commission, but Suzanne has been the driving force behind getting this trail organized and put together, and it's been a long time in the coming, but when it comes to full fruition, it's going to be a great asset to Lakeport, and I would really like to thank Suzanne for doing that.
Thank you, Doug.
Can we now introduce the public? Okay, then we are going to move on to council business and our budget. Margaret, did you want to start?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. Counsel. First and foremost, I want to give a big thank you to the citizens of Lakeport for trusting in the city council and city staff by their vote on Measure Z. The budget would have been a much different story than we have this year had we had not, we had in past Measure Z. So, a big thank you to the citizens for their support. The budget starts with goal setting from the departments, and then we have a setting with the council, and then council sets priorities and the goals for this coming year. Nick's going to talk a little bit more about that in his presentation, so I won't say a lot about that. Nick will also explain the process in his presentation and expected revenues and expenses for the years of 18, 17, 18. Just a little bit about the year in review for fiscal year. I know that Nick will talk a little bit more about money and dollar amounts, and I just want to talk a little bit about some of the projects. And 1617 was, well, it was one of the biggest challenges we have for the fiscal year were the winter storms of February, January, and February 2017, which displaced over 42 families for many months, and storms also caused havoc and severely damaged Lakeport waterfront and our beautiful library park. So, for several weeks, most city staff was dedicated to the flood emergency during that time, and required, sometimes some of the projects required round-the-clock staffing, and we were fortunate, I know Ukiah, Sebastian Paul sent someone.
St. Elena.
St. Elena, and then Ukiah, we had two people from Ukiah for a really long time here helping us, we had a 24-hour line that went in for the diversion for the sewer line. So, really thankful to them. Fortunately, FEMA, the State of California did declare this a state of emergency through CalOES, and through FEMA. So, with those two declarations, we will probably be getting back over 90%. Some areas, Doug did a really good job, where we might get 100% for the cleanup portion of it, but between OES and FEMA. Other than that, most of the projects will probably be 96, 98% covered between CalOES and FEMA. The drawback on that, we'll talk a little bit about that with some of the funds that we could have spent on projects we want to just kind of set aside, because we have to front the money, and then we have to wait for FEMA to reimburse us, so that could be up to a year on that. So, that was a big, a big challenge for this fiscal year, but some of the positive things that we did, and lots of positive things that were happening in 1617, where all the water and sewer projects that we were working on for two or three years, those got completed. Main Street was a huge project, that was more of the most staff-intensive project we did for the city that year. And so, and that was all covered by redevelopment, water and sewer funds did the water and sewer projects on that, it was, we didn't use general fund for that project. The road projects, we're finishing up Bevins Street, we finished up Bevins Street, we're finishing up Ford Street, I don't know if you noticed the construction out there, E Step between Martin and Fifth, and portions of Fifth Street resourcing, these were all for like additional emergency access, the Fourth, Fifth, and all that area. And then we received CDBG grants, we did the lakefront planning this year, which was a huge project, we got over like 700 responses and surveys that we did, and then we had workshops here successful, they turned out, we had good turnouts for our workshops. We received a $40,000 grant for hotel feasibility study this year, which is, we just got a final draft today to review on that. We also got the final draft for the lakefront planning today, everything kind of came out. Still in draft form, but I think we're, you know, ready to get that out pretty soon. The city also finished trimming all the CDBG funds for the small business loans that we had, so that was all completed this year. And we swore our 13th, well, we got our 13th position for sworn staff, which will be the neighborhood and business police officer. So, if we can only get all the positions filled, which we're going to have some Monday, some interviews for, to help, for some candidates to fill some of those positions we have empty right now. So, those are just some of the highlights from last year's fiscal year. For this year, for the fiscal year 1718, of course, we're back, our main focus was enhancing public safety and getting back to street repairs, which was the main focus and direction from council, and we heard that from the community too during our whole Measure Z, the whole Measure Z campaign that was out there. So, this year, the council's direct, for their main goals was, public safety was first and foremost, and staffing and operations for public safety, road improvements, which includes paving equipment, and then staffing to do the street repairs, completion of South Main, Sota Bay annexation, which we are in discussions with the county, complete solar array for the project, which will be a big project for the city and hopefully limit quite a few of our costs for electrical services, PG&E bills. Replace aging patrol cars is in the budget, and also economic development, it was a high priority for, not only through the Measure Z process, but also city council, and one of the items was actually looking to provide Wi-Fi for downtown, so as visitors are here in the area, they can sit out in the park or at Court House Square and, you know, have Wi-Fi and spend a little bit longer time here. Some of the operational highlights were, you know, fiscal 1617 was the year of capital projects, and in 1718, project completions will be our focus, completing everything that we do already have been started. And then, so with that, there's a strong emphasis placed on our people, recruiting and retraining and retaining the best our community can afford, following the highlights of what's to come, because as we're driven with lots of projects, that means we need staffing to complete the project. So, but in terms of total compensation, Lakeport has fallen behind its closest neighbors, including the County of Lake, and lost its competitive edge in recruitment and retention. So, it's a common theme across the state, but particularly challenging in our region where local revenues are limited, but compensation and labor market is fierce, so we are moving to address some of those issues in this year. Also, let me see, some of the capital highlights in the project for this year, and there'll be some, Nick will talk about some, but we are going to finish the Lake Shore Storm Dream project that's been going on. We were getting ready to start it, and now after the floods, there is a larger portion now that we've done, so now we're redoing the environmental, and so hopefully have that going here soon again, complete that in this year. Rehabilitate Carnegie, that went out for bid, should be coming back on November, I mean on July 11th, the special council meeting, we should also be approving the bid selection of contractors so we can get that done, and we're kind of in a short timeframe for that because of the grant that we got for that project. And that's all, that's all going to be through program income, which is reusing old grant funds that come back in. Police car replacement, we have three cars in the budget, we were purchasing a new dump truck for street projects coming up, purchasing a roller for street projects, repaving of Geiselman Street, and repairs to South Main are the big capital projects that we have listed right now. So, we have a lot of big projects coming up this year, and the other area that council also found as one of their highlights was economic development. So, the three main, there was a strategic plan adopted by, or prepared by the LEAD Act, the Lakeport Economic Development Advisory Committee, which Kevin and Wilda worked, spent a lot of time on that, and so we will be talking about that at the July 11th meeting, and then we'll be, they'll be coming back for adoption the next meeting after that. But the main focus is promote and participate in regional economic development initiatives, expand and support business retention and attraction efforts, and strive to enhance the historic downtown and lakefront area, like the three overwhelming goals for the strategic plan. So, having said all that, looking ahead, the recommended 1718 budget is a prudent and careful expenditure plan focusing on project completion, enhancing public safety, enhancing street improvements, and position the city to strengthen its human capital. We know the greatest concerns and service demands for the citizens of Lakeport are, have been, have been told to us through community meetings, through surveys done, that public safety roads and infrastructure and a high quality of life are, you know, at the forefront. Not only do we serve the community as professionals, we live here as well and call Lakeport our hometown. The spinning plan was developed in the context, and resources are being maximized to provide the greatest benefit possible to the community. The new sales tax revenues and community support will not only ensure vital city services are maintained, but it will also allow the city to enhance and add new service to benefit the entire community. So, I want again to thank the community for their support in funding Measure Z, the entire staff of the City of Lakeport for the hard work and endurance they've demonstrated over the last few years, they continue to impress me by what they've achieved and with the limited resources we had over the past years. To my management team, I owe a particular thank you in preparation of this budget, which would not have been possible without their planning efforts and willingness to work collaboratively with cities that center their heart. A special thank you to Nick, who came in right when we were starting the budget planning and just picked it up and took off with it and did an excellent job, so I really want to thank Nick for that. And mostly the city council, again, I praise you for leadership you've demonstrated, and extend my sincerest gratitude for the trust you place in your professional management team. As always, your support makes our job more rewarding and compels us to perform our best. Thank you very much. And so, I just want to start that off, and then I'm going to let Nick actually do the...
I just wanted to add to that, because you have gotten so much done, and there is a new sense of vibrancy in Lakeport, and I love this other section that you wrote, so I really want to kind of share this, bear with me, I want to read some of this discussion. "We are transforming from a place of economic recovery to one of hope and opportunity. This transformation is something far more significant than what city staff and council alone can do. It requires community involvement and participation from our citizenry. We look to move away from the traditional concept of city customer to one of city citizen. Collaboration between all stakeholders, residents, businesses, city staff, and everyone else who calls Lakeport home is vitally important in this effort. It will be the moment of the citizen, our community, our hometown. It's time to unleash the power working together can yield." I love that.
Thank you. So, this, my staff report is basically mostly the city manager's message in the budget, so if anybody wants to read more of that, that's, it's right at the very front of the budget, and it gives us an analysis of last year and what's kind of going on this year. Thank you, thanks to you guys, counsel, for everything you guys do for us.
Nick?
Good evening, counsel. So, since there weren't any significant changes to the numbers from what was presented at the workshop, the slides have basically just been shortened slightly, some stuff removed, and some stuff clarified, so we'll just try to go through it relatively quickly. Some sections of the budget to note, it's a relatively large document, the city manager's budget message is on page one, the city-wide summary on page 16, general fund summary on 17, Measure I and Measure Z details on 27 and 28, and the five-year capital improvement programs on page 29. Some information on the fundamentals of our budget approach, it's a strategic approach, renewing council priorities annually and outlining the budget to meet those priorities, continuing to focus on project completion, some of the stuff that I mentioned earlier, the Lake Shore Storm Damage Rehab, Carnegie Library, Geiselman Water Main, and Road Rebuild, and storm damage repairs. We, the city continues to have an emphasis on efficiencies and service delivery. The investments from the budgets are prioritized in operating efficiencies and cost control, economic development, and infrastructure and capital. Some of the highlights from the budgets, total budget revenues are about 12.2 million, total budget expenditures are 13.2 million. That 13.2 million in expenditures is made of personnel, 4.75, operations, 3.67, debt service of 1.45, and capital improvement of 3.33. And the difference between the revenues and the expenditures of a million dollars are capital reserve spending items, one of which is the Carnegie Library, which is funded out of program income from CDBG grants, which is just revenues that we've received in prior years that are being expended in the current year. The Geiselman project is being paid out of the capital project reserve for the water fund, and a cameraman is budgeted to be purchased out of the sewer capital project reserve.
And that cameraman is to, for the INI issues, we happen to address those?
Some of the personnel change highlights, the administrative services specialist was budgeted a half-year last year, and that's been increased to one FTE, as well as the community development technician, which is, which still needs to be filled. There's proposed addition of one FTE for a maintenance worker one, an increase from 0.67 FTE to one FTE for the equipment mechanic, which is offset by a reduction to the EMC supervisor who retired. The public works supervisor of one FTE has been reduced, I think Margaret mentioned in...
Yeah, that's actually the public works superintendent, which was Doug's position, we haven't refilled that position at this time yet. I may be coming back in the future with that, to discuss that with you.
Wastewater operator is an increase, a proposed additional one FTE, and extra help, proposed addition of half an FTE. In the slides, you'll be able to see it graphically, kind of where those increases are, and the total being 1.83 proposed additions to full-time employees.
Did you have anything, Kelly, you wanted to add on positions?
No, I have no questions.
Some additional highlights, we feel the general fund is balanced fiscally and structurally with a $60,000 estimated surplus, and strengthening enterprise funds, and a strong focus on public safety, roads, human capital, project execution, and cost control, increased emphasis on economic development.
That 60K, I just want to remind you, that's, we could be doing more projects with it, but we're just setting aside for right now because of the storm damage that we're, at least that we have to come up ahead of time to help offset a little bit of that.
Some additional highlights, we're expecting a surplus from the current fiscal year 1617 of about $100,000, and we talked about in the workshop, you know, bringing that, once the books have been closed, the numbers have been audited, we'll bring that surplus back to council and get your wishes on whether or not we should add additional projects in the current year, put that many aside for storm repair projects, kind of get a direction from council.
And most of that is, the first item is the unfilled positions that we have our time filling over the year.
So, we're still on track for the 100,000?
I'm pretty sure that, yeah.
That's a conservative estimate. And that savings is coming from unfilled positions, which is a double-edged sword, saves us money, but people are working harder.
And they can't get things done too without staff, yeah?
Savings from operations and savings from capital projects, which didn't get completed. Looking forward, costs are increased for personnel, you know, directly related to pension, pension costs. This year, we didn't see a large increase in healthcare benefits, but that's very hard to predict. Two years ago, there was 8% increase, you know, some organizations are seeing 13 to 16% increases annually in healthcare coverage. This slide highlights a 205% increase in spending erosion infrastructure over last year, which makes up 17% of the total expenditures in the general fund. It also shows an 8% increase in public safety spending, of which 39% of the budget in the general fund is public safety. Some slides here really quick showing the property tax distribution, showing... Some slides here really quick showing the property tax distribution, showing the small piece of the pie that the City of Lakeport receives from property taxes. Sales tax distribution, we get a little bit bigger piece of the pie, which is still shared with primarily the state of California and its different funds where they take our sales tax dollars. Measure I proposed spending plan includes some general costs for road maintenance and rebuilding, parks, buildings and grounds, maintenance on West Shore Pool, and the majority going to public safety and police.
And just real quickly on the pool, I don't know if I mentioned, general caps are actually, we've hired some of their lifeguards and their staff. It's still under the city, but they provide the staffing for the summer. It's open on Saturday and Sunday now. We've never had it open on the weekend, and we just really just wanted to make sure families were able to go on the weekend. So it's, still have five days. It's closed on Monday and Tuesday?
Yes.
And open Wednesday through Sunday to have more families there. And then hopefully next year, we'll have a new pool, so that will be a different, our budget will show some different costs there.
Are we publicizing that anyway?
We have, from the WordUp, Doug?
Yeah, it's on our website and, yeah.
Sent it out, Facebook, different areas. And I think, was it in our newsletter? I hope so. Can't remember now. I think it was in our newsletter also. I'll bring that one out.
This next slide is proposed spending for Measure Z, which was invented by the Measure Z Oversight Committee a couple weeks ago, and includes equipment, three new vehicles for the police, a dump truck and asphalt roller, and a Kubota all-purpose vehicle for the road crew in parks, street repair material, playground structure for the park, tables, trash receptacles at Library Park, city hall customer service upgrades, increase to police operational costs, additional public works, roads employee, which we discussed earlier, a beach street overlay, Geiselman paving, the general fund portion of Geiselman paving, and the surplus, which was also mentioned earlier, $60,000. And this is a list of all the capital improvement projects. Should I read through it really quick? Are you guys good?
We're good.
I think we're good.
And just a few graphic slides. This slide is just showing the trend in revenues and expenses over the years. You'll see the increase in 1718 primarily due from Measure Z. The makeup of the revenue composition over the same period of time, and I think what's important to mention about this slide is that tax base is the primary source of the city's revenue, and that's what we rely upon, and that's why Measure Z was necessary, was that's where the margins are, is in property tax and sales tax. The composition of expenditures in the general fund over the same period of time, as you can see, capital improvements is the focus, and that's increasing. Debt services stable over the next, over last year, since we haven't entered into any new debt. Operations is the same, salaries and benefits increasing from the proposed additional positions. High chart version of the citywide revenues, which includes sewer services and water services, along with some special revenues and some special assessments, showing that the general fund revenue is about 50% of total city revenue. And citywide expenditures by type of spending, public safety having a large piece, erosion infrastructure having a large piece, water operations, zoo operations, and then general government making up the chart.
I know this was really quick, but we, it's the same format that we had at the other public hearing, the workshop, the public budget workshop.
Hey, Nick?
Welcome.
Any questions from Council first?
Nope.
No new questions?
There's no question. It's just the thing that always concerns me since I got here was this, the side fund and the PERS and how that thing is, just seems to be, and it has, we have no control over it, and it can have such a devastating effect on our budget. It just scares the daylights out of me. And in fact, that other funds all over the place, I think you mentioned that you were doing like 29% or something on your own fund, and maybe you should manage it.
We should feel good that we did something about it, though. We're managing it well, much better than many things.
Yeah, it's still going to be, you know, there's some increases coming and, you know, it doesn't create any more benefit to the employee. In fact, the employees since 2012, I think, have a lowered formula going on, but it's just the investments and the return that PERS has gotten that we're, they're passing the bill along to the, all the entities that participate in it.
I'd still think that the self-insurance agreement is one of the best things we ever did, and I'm really proud that we went ahead with that because I know that that savings is tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars over time.
Last year, the first year, we didn't go, it was a, even, we didn't pay anything more when other agencies were paying, you know, double digits. And then last year, it went up because we only had one year for them to go back on the liabilities, and so, and it was a bad year. So this year was better. We went up like a little bit under 2%, and everybody else was going up, you know, 12% to 15%. And so hopefully, now that we have three years under our belt, it'll keep smoothing out and be better, you know, moving forward, yeah.
That was brilliant.
Anyone from the public? Suzanne?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Do I need to come up?
Please.
It is good to see you walking without a cane.
I know, thank you.
It's that walking path.
Walking that path, truly.
You're going to lose it.
Yeah, well, that's what they say. If I can walk on flat ground, I can learn how to walk the way I'm supposed to. So that's important. I'm just a little bit confused because I see the, and I'm not looking at the whole budget because I can't see it from down my glasses, but I'm a little confused over the total revenues and expenditures. So the expenditures are more than the revenues by a million bucks, right?
That's correct.
But the general fund is balanced and seems to have, I'm confused.
It's always very confusing because there's funds that are not new revenues coming in.
So, so the general fund has a budgeted $60,000 surplus?
Right.
The million dollars in expenditures that are over the revenues are coming out of some special revenue funds of CBGG grants, where it's called program income. And so we've received a grant and we've loaned the money out.
Oh, okay.
And then we receive repayments of the loan, and we have to spend those on like projects.
Okay.
So the Carnegie Library is being completed out of those funds. The Geiselman project is being funded out of the water, the water enterprise fund, and the cameraman is being funded out of the sewer enterprise fund. So those funds don't have a balanced budget. They have a balanced operating budget, but if Council approves the budget, they'd be spending part of their reserve amount to complete those projects.
Okay, so their funds that we have already, they're not new revenues coming in.
Right, okay.
So that makes, that's what makes that look like we're spending more than we're getting in because we've already gotten that money in and sitting there.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Sure.
It's a good question.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
I think I asked that same question.
That's a really good question.
Yeah, we asked that.
Okay, going back to Council, any final comments? Now we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the recommended budget for the City of Lakeport and to, and its component units, and offer the city manager to expand the appropriations found therein for the fiscal year 2017, 2018.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, do we need a roll call for this? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nice work, everybody. Okay, next we have the GAN limit review and resolution. Nick?
So in conjunction with the adoption of the budget, annual requirements set forth by the California Constitution, California Government Code, Section 7910, for the governing body to each year adopt a resolution approving the appropriations limit under GAN. The Department of Finance provides estimates to help calculate the maximum allowable appropriation of revenues subject to limits for the fiscal year 1718. For the year 1718, that limitation is $11,486,172. Luckily and not luckily for the City of Lakeport, that's only 46% of our GAN available revenues. So we're not very close to the appropriations limit. It's a, it's an estimate that's calculated based off per capita personal income and the percentage change in population. So you take the prior year number and adjust it against some current year estimates from the Department of Finance and come up with the current year number.
And that's just for the general fund, because waters, too, are enterprise funds that don't, aren't part of the GAN limits.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically just sales tax and power re-tax.
Okay, any questions? Anyone from the public? We have a suggested motion.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the appropriation limits of $11,486,172 in fiscal year 2017, 18 for the City of Lakeport.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a revision of the State of California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Ordinance. Back to you, Nick.
The Council is being asked to adopt a resolution opting into the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act and to approve the first reading of the ordinance. To expedite approval of ordinance, the Council is being requested at the end of the meeting to adjourn for seven days for the second reading of the adoption. Due to some changes in regulations or recent events, staff has prepared revisions to the ordinance to ensure compliance with applicable laws and regulations of the Uniform Cost Accounting Policies and Procedures. The UCAPP program formulated by the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Commission is a comprehensive set of policies and procedures based on the accounting requirements of the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act of 1983. And I think the major things to take away from this, from this resolution is the city's required to, to construct a list of vendors and contractors. And once that list is, is created, any, any project below $175,000 does not require sealed bid, a formal bid process, including sealed bids and newspaper advertising, website advertising, things like that. Anything over $175,000 would be required to follow those procedures. It also allows the city to go ahead and use its force to count for projects up to $45,000. So the updated ordinance sets forth the requirements of the UCAPP in regard to establishing and maintaining a list of contractors, provides for updated policy related to informal and informal bidding procedures.
And we have the advanced, or the seven-day council meeting that we're asking, because we have all the theme of projects coming up, and wanted to get that process and start the clock for the 30 days for the ordinance.
One question I got is, that $45,000, was that set back in 1983?
Yeah, actually, no.
It was, it's updated occasionally by the legislature, and I think the last time it was updated was 2012.
It's the same number, though, from '83, though.
No, it started out at $25,000.
Okay. See, that's what my concern was, is because prices keep going up, does the legislator say, yeah, this is...
They do that. They don't seem to do it that often, but our ordinance is written so that it will incorporate, by reference, any future increases in those, in those thresholds. But by contrast, if you don't opt into this, the threshold is $5,000, over which you have to formally bid everything. So in contrast...
Just very timeless and very expensive for us to...
Isn't that the $45,000, isn't that also the number that, anything over that, you have to go out to prevailing wage and all that kind of stuff, and it can just double or triple it?
We have to bid out labor for that, yeah.
Tend to delay a project quite a bit.
The prevailing wage limit is actually $1,000, and that's, that will always, that's the same regardless of what we're, whatever our...
The $45,000, though, is, we can use city employees.
City employees, yeah.
That's why there is no...
That's correct.
Thing about prevailing wage.
That's what I missed.
But if we contract any labor, as David was saying, $1,000 or more, then that goes as prevailing wage.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
If not, Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the proposed resolution electing to become subject to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act and move to introduce the proposed ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 3.05 to the Lakeport Municipal Code to comply with the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Second, before we take a vote, is there anyone from the public?
Do we need to mention the adjournment?
No, we mentioned, Nick mentioned it, and then we'll get to it at the end.
And that's it, that's enough, just...
We'll get to it at the end.
What do we...
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no other comment? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve new and modified job classifications. Kelly?
Do we need to move to introduce the ordinance?
I think Kenny did that.
You did vote? Okay. I'm going to come in.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't think my microphone's working, so I'll come up here.
It is, oh, over there.
That one, yeah. So this evening, I'm bringing before you a few new classifications and a couple of modified classifications. In reviewing some of our operations, we felt that, staff felt that we could improve on some efficiencies in operations, particularly in the utilities division. We're proposing utility operator 1, 2, 3, wastewater system supervisor 1 and 2, and then a water operations supervisor 1 and 2. And all of these classifications will require dual certification in both fields. And we're feeling like that will make more versatility in the employees. It'll give current employees opportunity to move up and grow if they, if they don't have those certifications now, and it will allow for our supervision to move people around wherever, wherever they're needed. So we've, we've looked at the job market to, we've looked at the market out there to get pay that's equivalent to what's out in the marketplace, and asking for approval of those changes in utilities. There's two others. There's also maintenance worker 3 that we're looking to add, and this would give long-term employees who don't really have that upward mobility but have a lot of knowledge and have taken on a lot of leadership or extra duties, it would give opportunity for that type of employee to move up. And then we also have a need within the Finance Department for a government accountant. We need that extra layer under the Finance Director to supervise the clerical staff and also just provide a higher level of account, accounting work than what is currently done. and also just provide a higher level of accounting work than what is currently done. Currently, we've budgeted for an additional utility operator in the upcoming 2017 and 2018 budget. Otherwise, all of these changes are just growth opportunity. They aren't adding positions. So there's no new bodies attached to these. These are just new classifications that we need approval on if you're
Thank you, Kelly. It's really well thought out. Any questions?
Did you talk to the department heads to get the responsibilities of these new positions?
Oh, absolutely.
Or is it just something that you got, you know, other counties and stuff?
No, we, usually the need, the need begins with the supervisors. You know, we identify a need, and then we, we may go out to other cities and counties and look what they're doing. Or I talk to HR directors all the time, especially for smaller cities, like, hey, how are you structurally set up, and how is that working for you? So we do, we do that quite a bit. But this really is driven by a need within our department to have a more diversified employee, but also to, you know, incentivize those employees to go out and have those certifications. And this will also help with rotations for standby and that type of thing. You'll put more people into that pool that can, that can be called out in the case of, you know, the water plants, something's beeping that shouldn't be clarified. I don't know exactly how that works.
We need more people to know what that means.
Doug, did you try to answer that thing?
Doug looks like he wasn't talking.
Yeah, oh, actually, that thing's working. And what this is gonna do is, just so you understand our structure right now, in wastewater we have two people, and in the water plant we have three. So with the current licenses and the way that we're set up right now, we really don't have anybody that can go from the water plant to the sewer plant if somebody's sick or somebody gets hurt. We don't have anybody that can likewise go from the water plant, or the sewer plant, the water plant if we have a shortage or have a need. By going with this system, our operators are gonna have a dual license so that they will be able to work either in the water or the wastewater side. So what we're actually doing is eliminating the need to hire specific individuals, additional individuals, to work in just water or to work in just sewer. This is gonna give us that ability not to have to go out and hire more bodies, but we'll be able to do that within-house with our own staff and then give our staff an opportunity as they take on more of these certificates to get compensated for that. And yet, still be quite a bit cheaper than, you know, adding a whole nother body with a whole nother set of benefits. So it's also a cost savings in the long run is what we're looking at to accomplish also.
And one thing I did overlook, the wastewater, the two supervisor positions, we actually have two bodies in those positions now, so this change would affect them. They would receive pay increases because the, these pay scales are going up a little bit. So that is an immediate impact. They mentioned before that there was no new positions other than the utility operator, but there is a slight financial
And they're in the break. This is all the budget from anywhere?
Yes, it's all
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the department heads had their say of, you know, this is, if I have a worker 3, this is what they should be doing type thing, and substitute can work towards that.
Yeah, if I did this on my own without talking to them, I wouldn't be standing here. Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions?
Well, one of the things that occurs to me is like, when you have a, like a supermarket, and you have a deli, and you have a produce, and you have, you have checkers, and you have people in the meat department, it really saves a lot of time and trouble if you can send someone from the meat department over to the deli to cover when someone calls in sick and you don't have to call, you know, you've got someone already there. Someone who can also work and go up and check when they're needed. And, you know, it's just, it's a business decision that's very prudent, and it's an excellent solution to an otherwise more expensive problem. So I give you kudos for, and I think that the guys and any gals that might be out there that, I think the opportunity for advancement through extra certifications is something that they will be looking forward to, I'm sure, and they feel that they have power over their future and they're not in a dead-end job, so to speak. So I think it's a brilliant solution for a very complicated and expensive problem.
And it really helps our on-call staff, too, because we have limited, now we have more people that are trained in both areas, which would be more efficient in our on-call issues that come up.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
I do, I do have one question here, just kind of piggybacking on what Kenny said, the cross-training aspect of it. Is, are there any of these positions, like the maintenance worker, who has the opportunity to get certified in water or wastewater?
Yeah, any of, any of the employees can get, you know, certified.
Yeah, they can. In fact, in the last year or so, we set up a program where they, they actually was a cash incentive to get some of those certifications, and that was a really successful program. It's, I mean, there's a lot more involved in becoming an actual operator, but some of the certifications can be obtained, and it definitely does add a level of help. So a maintenance worker that's certified is definitely valuable. But maintenance workers, it is a different job than operator. It's actually much different. So they don't, there's not a total crossover there, but there is a little bit of crossover in it. It's actually really helpful to have them certified in certain aspects as well.
Plus, it gives them incentives to change into a different job if they want to go in that direction.
Certainly.
And it's very hard to recruit for those positions because they have to come with certifications, so it's really important to
It's quite competitive.
Keep those employees.
So, but we're giving people the opportunity to progress and mature in their job and move on. We're giving them a ladder to climb, which
Don't say the word "move on."
That's the problem.
We're giving them incentive not to move on and stay on our ladder.
That's right. We work here, buy a house, not move to the bakery.
That's what I meant. Thanks, Kelly.
Anyone from the public? Okay. We have a suggested motion. There's no further discussion.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move to approve the following new and modified classifications as presented effective July 1st, 2017. Maintenance worker 3, utility operator 1, 2, and 3, wastewater system supervisor 1 and 2, water operations supervisor 1 and 2, and government accountant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Council Communications. Margaret?
Nothing further to add, no?
Nick?
Nothing further to report.
Doug?
I only have one thing to report, because I know that, I'm sure you've been getting as much heat as I've been getting on the playgrounds. We have confirmation, knock on wood, hopefully nothing interferes with that, but if everything goes right, we will have bark back in the playgrounds by the 4th of July.
Great.
That's
That's good news.
That is good news. So I want to give one little diamond for this evening. That's it.
Thanks, Doug.
Is that, is that bark, is that the rubber stuff, or is that real bark?
No, it's real bark, but it's engineered. Yeah, it's engineered. Yeah. Yeah, for ADA, it's for ADA access. So it comes with a certificate, which of course you pay for, but it will meet all current ADA requirements, and our playground will be ADA compliant.
Great. Kelly?
No to report.
Kevin?
Nothing to report.
Chief?
Just a reminder, we have community outreach on Thursday, a hot night with a cop down in Library Park.
And we're all set for the 4th?
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of doing our, our internal operation plans for our police operations center that'll be here in the council chambers on July 4th, and that's all moving on well. So we're pretty much ready to go already.
And did we end up with some volunteers for cleanup?
Yes, we did. As a matter of fact, Lieutenant Ferguson and I met with the fireworks sales groups and their coordinator from the fireworks company, and they do have a plan in place. They've selected or identified a group or two that are gonna be out starting cleanup that night and then finish up the next morning. We asked them to focus on the primary shopping centers, such as Safeway, Bruno's, Kmart, and also the Vista Point where there was a lot of debris and complaints last year as well. And then with anything else that the city may need. They've also advised me that they've contracted with Lakeport Disposal to have dumpsters placed at those locations as well. So they were extremely cooperative, very happy to help, and they, I believe that they'll have a lot better outcome this year.
Yeah, that's good. What time again, what's it, Thursday?
Thursday will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the gazebo.
Okay. Good. David?
Nothing to report.
Let's go first.
George?
Did right along with what the chief said for me last Friday, and it's quite informative, and it's a good thing. So if you ever get a chance to do it, I recommend it. Other than that, I'm gonna come with a dog thing. Unfortunately, it's gonna be hot, but it'll still
Kenny?
I'll be heading down to Monterey for the executive forum. I guess I'll be the only one there, which is good. It'll give me more time to be diligent and go through all the sessions and stuff. Matter of fact, I was actually going through past materials and uploading them into my equipment because the league does such a great job at education, and this will maybe give me a little time. And I'm still trying to work it out, so maybe I can take my wife with me, but we have a huge job on 750 people on Friday, the 30th, that kind of threw a wrench into the works, but we're gonna see if we can pull it off, so we might
Get some of those cross-trained people to fill in there.
Exactly.
Take them with you.
Yeah, and there's gonna be AVA, and I understand that, Kevin, that we've, we haven't had to tow very many because we've scared some people into removing their cars voluntarily, so we have no cars in the public right of way. So the AVA part of Lake County that involves Lakeport has been very successful. And I understand that everybody else has got hundreds that they're removing, so we're very fortunate, probably due to the fact that Kevin's been so diligent. So thank you, Kevin. That's it.
Tim?
I'm
You wanna pass? I'll come back to you.
It's been a long week, it's been a long couple weeks. The only thing I have going is the Mr. Lake County Pageant this Saturday night at 7:00 o'clock. So, please.
Always entertaining.
Be there. It's a good time. It's ridiculous, so. It is ridiculous. For a great cause. Fundraiser for the local theater company. Been heavily involved with that for about the last decade. Wow. The last decade. And, yeah, not the pageant, but the theater company, yeah. It's the fourth year for the pageant. Next year, Kenny said he's gonna come up and cut meat on stage or something. So we'll see that next year. That's all I've got.
Me, man.
I cannot beat that. Come on, anybody can beat that.
Nothing tonight?
I need to report things.
Okay, I don't have anything else. Our next meeting is at unusual times, so I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn the meeting to June 27th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. to be held in the Lakeport City Council Chambers.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you guys on June 27th at 6:00 p.m. Meeting adjourned.